Okay. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, May 24th. All meetings of the Select Board are recorded. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending provisions of the open meeting law, and his March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, and the general guidelines for remote participation. Sorry, this meeting of the Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right under requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the AG's webpage. The town will persevere to use conference call capabilities regularly for other parties to listen in and participate accordingly. If not possible, we will post on the town's website an audio recording as soon as possible after the meeting. This meeting, like all of their meetings of the Board of Selectmen, are recorded. If you're making a recording of the meeting, you are more than welcome to. Just please make it known to the Chair. And in attendance tonight, I see myself, Doug Mogul. I see Vice Chairman Dede, Russell Fox, CAO Steinhardt, and Secretary Solek, and a cat by the name of Rhett Banish. We'll start off with public comments. If anybody has anything that they wish to address to the to the Board of Selectmen at this time, now is your chance. Is there anyone here that would like to address the Board of Selectmen?
Robin, could you unmute Peter? Peter Courier can't hear our meeting, so there's an audio issue that he's addressing. As an attendee.
I'm asking him to unmute, so.
Can you hear us now, Peter?
Hello?
Can you hear us, Peter?
If you guys are talking, I can't hear you. It's just Zoom for some reason.
We can hear you now.
We can hear you.
Yeah, I think this is a me thing, so don't worry about me.
Okay.
Okay. Working through the agenda. First is Acknowledge of Payables Warrant Number 2128B, dated 5/17, in the amount of $538,181.97. And I need a motion for the open session minutes of 5/18. That's the, that's the agenda ahead of, consent agenda ahead of town meeting, correct?
Yep, it's only a single page that got sent to you today.
Joe Dede will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second that motion.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And Russ, feel free to just, you know, nod or raise your hand or something if, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anytime. And then we've got an appointment at 6:10, and then we have another appointment at 6:30 and at 6:40. Oh, good Lord. Okay, so we'll work through some of the action items while we're running ahead of schedule. Authorize the Chair to work with the CAO and Planning Board Chair for a hiring process for a new town planner.
Right, we hired an interim on last Thursday.
That is correct. So is there a discussion on this or a vote?
It sounds like you hired them.
We hired an interim one. The Chair, the Chair would not exceed his or anyone would have exceeded their authority. Obviously, this is a department head, so there usually is a process for that. And so while we all agree that the interim guy is, is a stellar opportunity, we, we didn't want to get out too far ahead of our skis, so there usually should be a process, usually a screening committee or an interview panel, and then they send that recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for a formal
If necessary, yeah.
Yeah, I think the screening committee has been the last five or six years with me and Mr. Mogul. Watching this young man go through the, the ranks that he has through the planning board. He's been a friend of us for many years, back when we were both on the planning board. I, I don't know if we need to do a full dog and pony showing. I think when we hired him, our time was thought was down, he was, as Mr. Mogul said, he would be our bench maybe. So I think we're here.
That's good. It's good. You know, right now, we're just waiting to hear back from him on his
Understood.
His proposal, so Doug and I will do that, or unless you want to, as incoming Chairman, at the next meeting, if you want to leave that to Doug as unfinished business for transition?
I, if it was up to me, I'd let Doug finish it out. Mr. Fox?
I'll make the motion to authorize the chairperson, i.e. Mr. Mogul, if he is not chairperson, to work with the CAO and Planning Board Chairman to hire, recommend a hire of a town planner.
Joe Dede will second that motion.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Thank you. Motion to ratify Chairman CAO pay rate for town election workers for calendar year 2021 at $13.50 an hour with election warden at $16.50 per hour and assistant warden at $16 per hour for mass minimum wage.
Joe Dede will make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I will second the motion.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
I will abstain because my wife helps out at the elections.
Okay, so that's 2-4, one opposed, one abstaining, sorry, geez. One more meeting, one more meeting. Calendar year, approved calendar year 2021, Wick 338 Races Event Schedule Amendment. And I believe that's in our folder.
Yes, it was, and it includes National
Correct, that's the big change, right?
Yes, that is the substantial change.
And I, I did see Rick yesterday. He's half scared, half excited about that. So, but I think that's a, you know, given where we are in, in the state of things and the lifting of the order and everything else, this probably will be advantageous to do it in July versus trying to either cancel it outright or do it in earlier when there were still orders to be dealt with, so. Is there a motion to approve that?
Russ Fox will make the motion to approve that schedule.
And I'll second the motion. Doug Mogul, aye.
Russ Fox, aye. Joe Dede will abstain if we do some of the proof there.
Okay, so that's 2-4, one abstention. I think I got that one right. Authorized Board of Selectmen member to sign off on land license agreement with the American Legion. Carl, is this the update for, has this been?
It's, it's going to be the same language. It's just a matter of myself and one board member meeting with the American Legion and setting the dollar value, and then we'll work with Steve Snell and Jeff Hool for signatures, but this is because the current agreement expires June 30th, and we have to have the new one in place to be able to hold the Nationals.
Okay. So is there a motion to authorize? Was that the Chair or is that the Mr. Fox?
Well, I think the incoming Chairman has already abstained on other aspects, so he won't be involved in this.
Correct. I, I don't, I take no offense, so whoever wants to do it, or I can do it either way.
There you go, Mr. Mogul can do it.
Great. Okay, there's a motion, I guess. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Joe Dede's in favor of Mr. Mogul?
Russ Fox seconds that motion.
Maybe I'll abstain and we'll get everyone with one abstention tonight. Doug Mogul and I, moving on. Okay, vote Useful Life DPW Truck. This is the thing that we're gonna, can we, we have to read this in its entirety, Mr. Carl?
Yeah, you want me to do it?
Please.
Okay, Russ, I'm gonna pretend I'm you.
Thank you, thank you.
Vote of the Select Board regarding Useful Life, aye, Clerk of the South Tonnasack in Massachusetts certified that a meeting on the Select Board held on May 24, 2021, of which a meeting, all members of the Board were duly notified, to which a quorum was present. The following vote was unanimously passed, of which appears on the official record of the Board in my custody, voted that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of a $260,000 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed on May 18, 2021, and we'll insert the article number, is determined pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Parenthesis 1, to be follows. Purpose Dump Truck Barring Amount $260,000, Maximum Useful Life 7 Years. And again, this is your DOR Useful Life Guidelines. Further certified, the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public that no vote was taken by secret ballot that had a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included adoption of the above vote was filled with, filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof, posted in a manner conspicuous, visible to the public at all hours in one municipal building. And the town clerk located, if applicable, in accordance with the alternative notice prescribed by or approved by the Attorney General set forth in 940 CMR 23.32, parentheses, be at least 48 hours, not include Saturdays, holidays prior to the time of the meeting, remains so posted at the meeting. Had no deliberation or decision in connection with the subject matter of this vote was taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law, Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25, as amended. And it would be tonight's meeting, and it would be Russell S. Fox as Clerk of the Board.
So we can read that as a motion made. Is there a second?
Joe Dede will second it.
Okay, Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
Fox, aye.
Fantastic. And Mr. Steinhardt, that was an excellent impersonation of Mr. Fox.
It's not easy.
And I see we have Erica Johnson here. Hello?
Hello.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. How are you?
I'm great.
I'm so glad.
And I believe we have our regularly scheduled Fiscal Year 19 CDBG Performance Meeting tonight.
We do.
So this is when I turn the meeting over to you?
You can.
Done.
If you're ready for me.
And you have a handout, you have a handout in your mail folder.
Of course we do.
But no sign-in sheet. I, I feel, I feel naked without my sign-in sheet, so when, when I come back and see you all in person, I'll pass around two, just so we can make up for this one.
And we'll get you the, a list of attendees from this meeting for you.
Of course, thank you. Thank you so much.
Do I have to read the public notice? Carl?
Erica, would you like him to read the public notice to open the hearing?
I, there are places I go where it's red and places I go where it's not red, so I defer to you.
So let's do it, let's do the, we'll do it halfway. So this is the public hearing on Monday, May 24th, to review the Fiscal Year 19 Southwick Community Development Block Grant awarded to town. Our grant projects include housing rehabilitation, engineering design on Bungalow Street, and additional community needs that can be addressed through the block grant program will also be discussed. And Erica Johnson is now going to discuss them.
I am. Hi, everybody. My name is Erica Johnson, and I'm here with my colleague. I'm sorry, I keep looking and see Ted Harvey. It confuses me. My colleague Nick Peavy, who is masquerading as Ted Harvey, because we all share Zoom accounts. Nick is joining me tonight. We're going to talk about the FY19 CDBG grant. So as you, as you stated from the public notice, there were two elements that were funded through the FY19 Community Development Block Grant. One was housing rehabilitation and septic repair loans, and the other was an engineering design study for Bungalow Street. And unless I hear otherwise, I'm just going to keep talking, and I'm going to start with housing rehabilitation. When we wrote the grant, our estimate that was that we would assist 14, up to 14 units. A lot has changed in the world of housing rehab since the time we wrote this grant application. Things have gotten expensive and things have gotten long, very long to, to finish up projects, so we're we're about halfway through, we're about halfway through in terms of numbers. We're a little more than halfway through when it comes, comes to funding. We're finding that things are costing a lot more than they were a few years back when it comes to housing rehab. So to date, we have had seven different projects qualified and moved through the program. Five have now been completed. We have two that are remaining under construction. Our total beneficiaries to date is 13, and then I just added in here to that four of them are age 60-plus, three are disabled. There's some kids in there, too. And then we continue to look for additional applicants to the housing rehab. So if you or someone you know is interested in receiving some more information about it, I hope that you contact our office. We'd be happy to talk with you because we do have funds available, both through the FY19 program and also through the FY20 program, which is about to start up as well. And when it comes to the Bungalow Street project, I know Randy is here, and Randy can provide a little better, better detail of where we are and the status of that.
Sure, can you hear, can you hear me? Okay, good. My internet's being a little slow, so. So Bungalow Street's a project we talked about. It's under design and permitting phase through Fussin' O'Neill, our consultant. They are, I'm going to say probably 85 to 90% complete with that effort. Hopefully, that'll be wrapped up in the next couple, maybe four to six weeks. And then at that point, we'll be ready to go to construction or the next phase of block grant funding. So as far as the design effort goes, it's a very similar project to what we did on Veteran Street about five years ago. That's going to include road widening to a uniform width, a new water line, new drainage, and we're also going to try to incorporate a dry sewer line as well. And so we think that'll serve that neighborhood very well. Any questions on Bungalow Street?
No.
Thanks so much. It's always nice when you hear something further along than you expected. Just once. Sorry, my children just arrived home. Alright, so that, that's where we are with the FY19. If there's any, any questions? Comments? Can I talk briefly about FY20?
Or?
Alright, so the town also received money through the FY20 block grant. Typically, we find out about these in the summer months, and last summer came and went, and we didn't hear a word. But they were announced recently, and the town was successful in securing additional funds in FY20. In FY20, like I said, we're going to have some additional funds available for housing. We're also going to have a similar design project to Bungalow, only one up on North Lake, and that'll be a design engineering permitting project as well. And there's also money in the FY20 to support the food pantry. But wait, there's more, because we can apply for FY21 as well. Those applications have been announced. They're going to be due in September this year, and we should be on track to have all the design ready on Bungalow, so that that can go in, into that grant application.
Good. What about now that we had the ADA study done a few years ago under that grant by the Mass Office of Disability consulting firm that a guy named James Mazick used to be part with, with the infrastructure to the town building in, in the terms of a ineligible item. It was something that he, he did identify, speak to, and write about in our building, serves a significant number of income-eligible people. So is there, is that will we get points and ranking and competitiveness by including that there?
Um, it will add competitiveness, but it, but it could be a competitive project.
Okay. Because it is, it is on our list. It was something that was identified through that that report that Jim did in there. It's in a separate report that Tyne Bond did.
Certainly, and I remember we talked about it, we talked about it a few years back, and I, I know I have notes about it in the office, but I, I can't, there was
I got notes too.
There was something that I can't
I got the report that the consultant did on that. And of course, that was funded by that state agency, so.
Sure, sure. Something we can definitely look at.
Yeah, because I mean, that's under a public building and then it's under infrastructure.
I know, and I, and I remember that you had there was an estimate for what was needed. Someone had looked at it and said, this is you know, beyond, beyond the ADA, it's great to have a working on elevator was, was some more, more concrete
Yeah, no.
Information about what was
Document, we have documentation and estimates.
That's wonderful. And we can, yeah, so like I said, the, the next application is coming up, and we can certainly look at the elevator. Also, we will have Bungalow ready, and I haven't seen a cost estimate yet, or maybe a cost. That doesn't mean a cost estimate hasn't been emailed to me, I, I'll admit. And perhaps, perhaps there's room for both. We'll see.
Yep.
Great.
Are there other items that could be considered, Erica?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Could I throw out one in, in just you know, in full disclosure, I'm going to be talking about the Southwick Recreation Center, which is a private nonprofit. I'm a member of the Board of Directors. We've learned that our roof of our 50-plus-year-old building is shot. We're going to have to replace it with a new roof. We basically service all the youth of the community. We act basically like our park and rec department and does in many communities. We service certainly people with financial difficulties. We have a program in place to, to waive fees for people in that situation. Would that be something that we could possibly consider? Assisting with the replacement of a roof for that building?
Yes. A possibility to consider. What it's going to have to be is, does it, does it qualify? So the strongest applications, the strongest elements of applications qualify through their benefit, their proven benefit to people who are low and moderate income. That's why we like housing. Housing's easy. We can, we can show that all our, all our clients are low and moderate income. Senior center is the same way, so we would have to, we would have to show that at least 51% of people who, who partake of services there are, are low and moderate income. Let's see, those I wrote something down because I had, I saw this one coming. So either the lower moderate income, there's also special cases around there, around job, job creation. Maybe that's a stretch, but there, but there, there are, there are some other elements. It's, it's not just, it's just not, it's not just low mod income, so there might be some other some other qualifying factors, but it's something that we could look into, but we would have to, we would have to make the case for why that's eligible and showing again that it, it provides a benefit to the low and moderate income people in the community, which may, may be easier to do than I, than I realize, because I'm just not as familiar as I am with other programs.
That's good. The other thing, Mr. Chairman, is in the past with the Fire Roofing Project, RFP, Erica is in the RPA is also our office with the Town Hall RFP process to go out in the near design.
Separate from CDBG.
Oh, yeah, separate from that.
Just to be clear for everyone listening at home.
Yes.
Separate from that and
Completely.
Funded with general funds and not other funding sources of the town.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I have some food pantry stuff, Erica, but you're about a week too early, so I don't want to say anything yet. I'll call you directly and throw some stuff at you.
That sounds wonderful. I will, I will say as I close that CDBG funds can be used for construction and rehabilitation of community facilities that provide public social services.
Excellent. Thank you. And I think that that would be a great idea. Awesome.
People don't have anything else?
Does anyone have any questions for Erica Johnson of PBPC regarding CDBG, and that's all the acronyms I can fit into one sentence? Hearing none. That will be the end of this public hearing. Thank you very much. Always good to see you.
Thank you. Likewise, and if anything comes up after, you know how to find me.
We do.
Alright, take care, everybody. Good to see you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you all.
You too.
Thank you. Okay. 6:30, close enough for me. Class 3 hearing, LKQ License Reissuance to Mass Used Auto Parts LLC. I have a whole procedural thing here. So this is for 58 Sam West Road. So we need first is a motion to open the hearing.
Joe Dede will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second that motion.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Dede, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Okay, step two, read legal ad. Town of Southwick Select Board Licensing Authority notices hereby given that the Southwick Select Board pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 140, including, but especially not limited to Section 58, will conduct a hearing on Monday, May 24th at 6:30 on the Zoom platform to consider the reissuance of a class 3 car dealership license at 58 Sam West Road. A license is presently held by LKQ Northeast LLC. The proposed license change will be reissued to Mass United Auto Parts LLC. And I apologize in advance. Victoria Privadanyak, it will contain the same limits and conditions as set forth on the current license. The current license shall be surrendered upon approval of the new proposed one being granted. The Select Board can approve of the request as proposed or amend at their discretion. The Planning Board has approved a site plan. Deed and plot plan are on file in the Select Board's office, and the location to be licensed is at 58 Sam West Road. Description of the premises is follows. The following bounded in described premises as more particularly described as Lot Number 2 on a plan prepared by DL Bean, Inc., dated April 7, 2007, and recorded in the Hampton County Registry of Deeds and Book of Plans 348, Page 90. Doug Mogul, Chair, Joseph J. Dede, Vice Chair, Russell X. Fox, Selectman. And that's, I've read the hearing notice. Step 3. Read any paperwork to be entered into the record. And there is an application here, which I don't need to read because it's just the application. I have no other paperwork in front of me to read into the record. So now is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the reissuance? And if you could please state your name and address for the record, and we can proceed. So is there anyone that would like to speak on, in favor of this application? Okay. Ask for anyone to speak against the reissuance. Again, if you could state your name and address for the record, that'd be great. Is there anyone here to speak against the reissuance of this license? Okay, and we're up to general discussion. So is the Victoria that's on the Zoom here also the same Victoria that's on the application for the license?
No, Victoria signed on the computer. Computer didn't have audio, so we're on the phone now.
Also so what it says Pete on my, my screen and the Victoria that's blank is the same person?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
They can tell us what they're proposing to do.
So we're proposing to just operate LKQ the way LKQ is operated, using their system and everything else, just at a different location or at that location.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Carl.
You also have another location, a little bit up the street from there, and you're going to continue with that one. Is there, are you going to keep that as a fully fledged operational one? Or are you going to scale that one back as well as address any of the earlier issues that the board had pointed out on the the drainage coming off of the site onto Sam West Road?
Yeah, so we were working on that. We're definitely going to scale back at that location because we outgrow that location. I often say we have more employees than we have customers. It's just, it's too small for us and the other location is a lot more suitable. However, you know, it is a big business and we put in a lot of work into it. We will scale back. We will start processing dismantling vehicles at the other location. And, you know, you can't do everything very, very quickly, but we will definitely scale down one location where the other one has more parking space for employees, also has more parking space for customers, and we will definitely keep both locations clean and as we were doing by keeping him, you know, cleaning off whatever runoff is in the road. Like, I think they brought up examples that there was sand that was washing out of the yard. So we filled up the yard with stone and that prevents the sand from going into the road. So we do maintain it and keep it clean.
Are those two yards contiguous to each other? Do they abut each other?
Nope.
Okay.
So I went out there a couple of weeks back and met with Peter. And we walked the fence line and I, and I heard his proposal and I smiled and said, you know, I'm being tortured by your runoff now. And I get it. It's a busy shop. There, there, there's a ton of stuff happening. And P assured me, and he did, they went in, they brought gravel in. I went back and looked the other day. So he is finally cleaning up that roadway coming in. I don't think you're going to get all the runoff off of that, but it should, it should definitely slow it down. And I think that's what we were trying to accomplish. And Peter also. Let me talk. Yeah, you did. You're doing fine, Pete. And he also promised me that his employees wouldn't be parking in front of that fence anymore like they've been because of the new location, they'll be able to fit their employees in the back for both facilities. Because Pete doesn't like the way it looks either. He thought it looked rather crappy. So Pete said he is going to clean up that front. They're going to do some kind of fencing too. The gate's not going to always be open or closed. It's still a business, but he's trying to take the pressure off the roadway and put it in this new facility in the back as far as employee parking customers. So he completely understood the disappointment in my eyes and promised me that he would clean things up. And he has, they're going in the right direction. We're not going to talk about putting rose bushes up because that's never going to happen. But they, Peter did do what he said he would do and I, I do trust him and I have a cell phone now so I can call him at any moment to clean up any other issues he may have moving forward. So I'm fine with it. Correct, Pete?
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
And, and, and I guess we're going to hold Victoria responsible for everything that Pete just signed himself up for.
Yep.
Are you ready for that, Victoria?
Ah, yes.
Okay.
Basically, I think they just got overwhelmed where they are. I mean, the internet probably takes your business all over the country now versus your local shop in Southwick. So as the post office, about that.
Oh, boy. I hope the post office could get a new building soon. We, we, we give, we do a lot of business with the post office and we're very, very good with them. They, they like our business. You know, we have a good relationship. We have a pretty much a backdoor key. We just pull up and just put the boxes right in there. And it's good for the town. I'm sure it's good for, for the post office, too.
Yeah.
Further discussion?
Russ?
You're muted, Russ.
Is that better, Mr. Chairman?
Way better.
All right, I apologize. Now, the only thing I would add is that we did get that grant to study the expansion of our industrial park and possibly connection over to Sam West Road. So I think it's very important that any businesses down there realize what's going to be coming down the road. And we all work together to make sure that the, the road doesn't have runoff and everything hopefully looks clean and, and because it, it reflects on the whole town. It's not going to be a quiet little road hopefully in a few years. It's going to be a very busy road.
Yep, two way traffic.
Right, so I, I, I know Mr. Diddy is like a pit bull, so he will be on you if there is any issue. And so I, all I can say is I wish you the best of luck. I hope you're very successful and I hope you'll continue working with the town of Southwick. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll echo what Mr. Fox said. Obviously, I don't know if you're aware, but we received a grant and we've been planning and talking about for many years. And it looks like, you know, sometime in the medium future, there'll be a connection from Hudson Drive through to Sam West and then brings, and then obviously Sam West back to Tannery. So that will increase traffic on that road and potentially truck traffic as well to come through the industrial park to get to points north. Rather than coming all the way back through the center of town and then east on fifty seven. So it could be, you know, a huge benefit to the town and to your business as well by, you know, improving access to Sam West. But just want to let you know that that's coming. If, is there any further general discussion? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Joe Diddy will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second that motion.
So roll call vote. Doug Mogul, I.
Joe Diddy, I.
Russ Fox, I.
And at this point, the licensing board makes a decision on the application. And therefore, there would be a motion to either grant or deny the reissuance. Is there a motion to be made here?
Joe Diddy will make a motion to grant that application.
Russ Fox will second that motion.
And that is also a roll call vote. Doug Mogul, I.
Joe Diddy, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Okay, Victoria. Keep him honest.
Look.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much. Guys, I can't believe that we're actually running two minutes early.
Oh, don't worry.
With this agenda, I know, well, it's about to go away. But here we go. Six, I see Tammy's here.
And Cindy.
They're both here.
And Cindy.
Hello.
And we are going to have a discussion regarding reopening town hall building phases and types of services. And I guess we're going to have a little bit of discussion, but regarding state legislation on open meeting law guidelines pending the June fifteenth governor emergency order expiration and what that means for meetings and so on and so forth. So why don't we open the discussion? Who wants, boy, that is a nice backyard. This is Sullivan. So tranquil. I feel more relaxed just sitting at home in Zoom, looking in your backyard.
As long as my dogs are not barking, we're good.
Holy, that's just fantastic. And it's beautiful outside, too. Anyway, sorry. So who wants to start? All right, I'll start. So I think one of the things we've been talking about, obviously, with the governor moving up his schedule, or the schedule, I don't call it his schedule, the schedule from an August first timeline to June fifteenth. The town of Southwick has not, and this is more around meetings. So you, we'll get into all the fun stuff of opening town hall in a minute. But as far as meetings and remote participation, the, the town of Southwick had not adopted the portion of Mass General Law to permit remote participation by members of boards and commissions. So pending any legislation that gets passed prior to June fifteenth. And I need to get an update regarding the governor's order in itself because under the thing that we read at the start of every meeting. His order, I believe that you had to return to regular scheduled programming within thirty days of the expiration of the governor's order. Unless that's changed by another executive order. So June fifteenth, we need to be ready to have meetings in town hall and you need to have every voting member of a board or enough to make a quorum at a posted time and place of the meeting, right? So we can't have members of boards and commissions participating in meetings on Zoom from, either from June fifteenth or thirty days after that, depending on how we get the explanation of how that works. So or the legislature crafts a bill and sends it to the governor for signature that will basically implement the remote participation law statewide under the open meeting law that we have not adopted yet. So stay tuned on that. And with that, I, I guess I'll turn it over to Tammy, right?
So I haven't heard anything yet about open meeting law. They haven't brought that up other than there was nothing to tell us at our last public health meeting. So I mean, I wouldn't mind getting that grace period of thirty days just to have everybody kind of get used to it and figure out where we're going from here. And I mean, I don't know how close we are to getting the rooms set up for. Is, are you shaking your head for?
I am.
Participation. Okay. So it would be nice to have that grace period of the thirty days. Do we have to, is that something that the town has to recognize or?
Well, I think that's one of the things we wanted to talk about. Well, one is the technology piece, right? Are we going to, can we do it now? I mean, I, I saw that there was one board that did a really cool, you know, totally rogue meeting outside the prohibition of the Board of Selectmen, but it came off really well. Cindy, I'm just teasing you, right? The Council on Aging met outside under the tent. They had people present. They had the Zoom. It was done totally okay per the governor's order, right? It just was contrary to the, the Board of Selectmen. But that's okay, because we, we cut Cindy a ton of slack. And it was done really well, like they had a couple laptops or a laptop and you could see everybody that's at the meeting, people that were in attendance could, could do all they wanted to do. We can do that now, right? That's really not that hard. We want to get to the point where we have like a camera and the audio setup so that someone who was joining a meeting via Zoom could take in the entirety of the meeting on Zoom if they're unable, either unable to attend a meeting or we can't accommodate it yet because of how we're going to phase this back in. So, and that's the part of the discussion to have. I don't think we're going to have that done in thirty days, even if we were to do it today, just with the general shortage of stuff to buy of anything that has anything electronic in it, it's going to be a while, right? So can we have Zoom meetings if we, even if we just, you know, bring a couple laptops to a meeting, we could do it today, right? And have and from June fifteenth, if it's, if there is no change in the law, either June fifteenth or thirty days past it. You know, this board, for example, would have to have two members in, in person and, and the third member could not join via Zoom and participate in the meeting as a voting member of the board, right? And I think from from what's happened over the course of the last fourteen months, I mean, I, I know I've, we talked about having the remote participation a couple of times prior to the pandemic. And each time it, it really didn't gain a lot of traction. I think now, given all that's happened, I think that we should reopen that discussion if there is no other legislation about doing that, because I think we've seen some benefit from it. Hell, we've had people call in from out of state. We've had people call in from on vacation to be a, you know, a participating voting member of a board or commission, right? For what it's worth, Joe's laughing. And some good, some bad, I guess, but I think it's worth the discussion. And also, we've, I think we've had some more limited participation by members of the public on Zoom. It's certainly easier to join a meeting on Zoom than drive down to town hall. There hasn't been an overwhelming use of it. And, you know, talking to Peter and people from other cities and towns, they've seen the exact same thing. So, you know, you don't get a ton more participation, but you do get some. So I guess we're going to have to figure out how we're going to reopen town hall and then, and then for meetings and then also for services. And I think it also has to be, and this is just Doug Mogul's opinion, and I don't want to get into the maybe I probably should just keep my big mouth shut because there are certain segments of the population that are more heavily vaccinated or further along the curve for that, which we should be amenable or open to, no pun intended, opening those sections of the building to run some programs for those that are in, you know, need of those services sooner than later, right? And can be done safely and can be done, you know, with, with less risk such as it is. Your ball, Tammy.
No, I agree. As, and I know you're probably speaking of some of the services that Cindy's offering and she really came up with a great plan to phase in based off of the activities that she has, you know, like, let's start out, like, starting off with things where you don't have to sit across the table, like from each other, where you don't have to share things, kind of working ourself in. Because I know that people, there are some people who aren't ready to just strip the mask off and go back to things as normal and getting in and kind of phasing in to the part where we're comfortable. It has been over a year. So it is, it's, I don't know. I, I don't think I could go into a store on May twenty ninth with my mask off, but that's, it might be more a habit than it is how I feel about going in, going places in the public. But I think that we can move forward safely and do these, you know, do some of these activities and, you know, open up town hall. As long as we, you know, we have reminders for people, you know, keeping people safe, you know, don't show up if you're sick. You know, stay home if you're sick. If you're not vaccinated, recommending that people wear a mask in the building. I think we can do it safely.
Now, you have, Tammy created a couple of different flyers about the mask wearing people to come in next week, you know, because the governor's first step is the May twenty ninth cutoff. So after Memorial Day, that would be June first for us for the, for the building open, at least for transactions like the treasure collectors in the North Wing there and the assessors. So we just need to look at those two examples and say whether or not they want to recommend the face coverings or they want to require the face covering. So that's one of the first decisions you need to make.
How do you want the complaints to come in? Because that'll, that'll decide how we answer this question. If you want to put up with people screaming because you're telling them they have to wear a mask, then we'll, we'll put that sign up. I mean, most of us are mature, but, but there are some that are not absolutely that do or do not get this whole scenario. So I, I, that's what it comes down to for me, just because it's going to be Michelle Hill that's going to get the wrath of that conversation, right? When they walk in with no mask and we're requiring a mask. And I'm okay either way, but that's what's going to happen, right? It's not going to be Carl's office. They, they haven't, they haven't reached that, that far in yet. So it's going to be, and, and same with Cindy, because she's, she's right there on first floor, you know, game on, you're right in the entrance. So I, I don't know. That's, that's a tough call.
I, I hear some of the concerns here and I share some of the concerns. But at the same token, a few minutes ago, we just approved a national for the town of Southwick on July tenth. So the good governor has said that people can go without masks on the twenty ninth. Our neighboring states are opening up. Other states have opened up. I, I think that we're mature adults enough to realize the different risks that are involved. So I would not be happy with mandating anything like that. I, I would have no problem with saying we recommend it, but to say that we're going to mandate something when we have the governor telling us it's okay to open up, other states are opening up. I, I think sooner or later, we have to come out of this. And I, I know it's easy for me. I've been vaccinated. Joe, you've been vaccinated, Carl, Doug, you know, and we encourage other people to get vaccinated, but some people aren't going to get vaccinated. But, but eventually we got to move forward. They did in nineteen eighteen and we're going to do it in twenty twenty one.
And to quote Ronald Reagan, Mr. Fox was not there when that happened.
Yeah. I mean, if, if they have to wear a mask, they don't. Michelle is going to call you, Carl. I mean, if, if they have to wear a mask and they don't, Michelle is going to call you, Carl, and you're going to call the police, but we're not waiting tickets. You know what I mean? We, we don't, the end game is we're not going to stuff and cuff someone with no mask on and bring them out.
Why don't we just go back, why don't we go back to, and I, I hear everybody here on this. Tammy, what is, I'm personally confused at this point with what are the recommendations? Because it seems like they, and they might have changed since this meeting started. I don't know. What are the recommendations come May 29th for indoors?
The recommendations are that if you're not vaccinated, it's recommended that you wear a mask when you go indoors.
So then why doesn't the sign just say that?
That's, what are the, your option signs does say that.
Right.
Yeah, I emailed you guys too, just to.
I saw it. I thought it said, one says it's recommended and one says it's required, right?
Yeah.
And did it say any, anything, and I, sorry.
Yes, it does. It does.
My assistant didn't bring me the printed matter, so I'm reading it on the screen.
Sorry.
In Town Hall, if you are not fully vaccinated, it says exactly what.
So I think that that's, that seems like it's in keeping with where we are and, and that's Doug Mogulyn's opinion on that as far as that seems to follow the guidance and it's kind of stepped in. And, and if someone chooses not to wear a mask and they're lying, okay. I don't, I don't know what you do about that, but whatever.
If you remember the governor, when he came on a week and a half ago, he talked about the honor system. And that, I think that's really as much as we can probably ask, you know, to, for people to use the honor system. That was really the case for a lot of things throughout the pandemic, which people either abused it or people really respected it. It's kind of one way or the other.
Mr. Fox, does that make sense to you?
It makes sense, Mr. Chairman, because, you know, people are going to be using the honor system in the grocery stores, the package stores, the gas stations, any place they go into, bars. So, like I said, I, I think most people are reasonable, intelligent adults. And, and we have to go forward.
Okay, so before.
I, I was going to bring up that there are some situations so far that have been advertised for mask wearing. And one of them is congregate care settings. So, but I haven't had a, they weren't able to tell me whether or not, like, so our food, like our senior lunches or anything like that, like, would that be considered congregate care? It doesn't look like it, but I'm, I've been, that's on the radar and I had sent an email to the state just getting a clarification for that for senior centers or places that feed seniors.
So Cindy, does this option of the recommended of the face coverings in Town Hall does mesh with your reopening plan on the senior center?
I mean, yeah, it, it was kind of up to the select board because I know that that was part of the governor's order was it was by town, by government. So, I mean, I would like people to wear masks if they're wandering around the senior center. And that is only because I know that there are some people who haven't been vaccinated. But, I mean, I will really follow whatever guidance you guys set forth. I feel like a majority of the seniors have been vaccinated, so the people who haven't are kind of entering at their own risk, right? I mean, that's kind of a statement that a lot of the senior centers have been using is we are opening and we want you to be safe. But know that if you haven't been vaccinated, then you are, you know, putting yourself at more risk. And that's kind of a personal thing and, and I'm, I don't think there's anything we can do about it. Because at this point, the people who haven't been vaccinated, I don't see getting vaccinated, so.
So on the first line of your draft where it says if the selectman approved masks, you know, your system mask would be required, so you'll say mask would be recommended?
Yeah, I mean, I wanted them to have it on until they were seated, but if that doesn't happen, we can certainly handle that. I'm trying to eliminate or limit in the beginning of people just wandering around the senior center, coming in for specific activities and then leaving in the phased approach that I sent to everybody, which, you know, can be tweaked if it needs to be tweaked. And it is, it is in line with what a lot of senior centers in the area are doing. But as the days go on, the emails are coming in where more and more are just opening and that's just what they're doing. Because it's, people are fighting it. So I'm not interested in fighting with people at the door. So if I have a phased in approach, then that's great. So whatever is approved, it, it's easier to have the backup, right? And to have us all be on the same page than people showing up at, you know, select boards, businesses and harassing them. I'm trying to.
Right. I, I think the phasing in is going to get you where you want anyway, even mask is only recommended. It's going to, I'm, time, passage of time that allows people to finish getting through this over the next couple of months because your plan is quite extensive. It goes all the way through into September and then all the activities, which is good. So it's, it's really stepping it in over the course of time.
Yeah. So if it's a, you know, I don't know if you guys have to formally approve it or kind of how that works, but definitely having backing and, and you guys being aware of what the, the phased in plan is, is helpful. It's helpful for us. It's helpful for the staff. And I would like to only have one entrance instead of the three that were open before, just so we know who, who's coming into the building. And, you know, right now, we're not going to have coffee going until later. So really the morning activities are kind of limited. So, you know, you know, just keeping that door locked so people just can't come in from Town Hall into the senior center. It, it's just helpful.
Which door do you want open?
So the sliding glass door, which is what we've been using for the last year. I think seniors are more apt to, they know that now that that's kind of how you get into the senior center. And we do have the doorbell there that it will be unlocked, but we do have the doorbell there in case someone doesn't know what to do or where to go. I think that's a natural entrance to the senior center. Even before COVID, I didn't like having three entrances because it seemed like people were just coming in and we didn't always know where everybody was.
You have a staff person right there in the kitchen that can monitor people coming right through. So aside, aside from just changing the word on the first, the first line of her reopening plan to, from required to recommended, that everything else looks like it would still be consistent and would flow in and would allow you to phase in your different programs. Do board members view it that way by reading the document?
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question. First of all, thank you very much for putting together such a detailed plan. It's awesome. What is the benefit or what is the, if, if the governor's order ends in Ju- June 15th, why would it, why would we go so far into September to get back to all of your programming? If, if, is there, is there, do you see a steadily decreasing amount of risk? Or is this what you need as far as runway, runway to reinstate some of the programming and stuff like that?
I think a lot of the programming in the past hasn't happened in the summer anyway. We did a lot of stuff in the summer last year because we closed in March. So typically we don't have classes in the summer. They end June 25th and they don't start again until the second week in September. But I want to keep classes going until the end of July. So I, I kind of want to get people back on track of, of the things that did happen in the senior center. And it's just volume of people, like the quilters, there's probably 50 quilters that come on Mondays and probably 30 that come on Thursdays. So again, they didn't typically come all summer long. So I think starting them in September is a natural way of opening, even though they really haven't met that much. But I, I feel like we need to get back to regular senior center operations. And honestly, I don't want to open it to 50 quilters coming in in a, in a small space for now. And I think, I think people will understand that with senior centers opening slowly, watching the numbers. I mean, I don't know if Tammy wants to speak to it at all, but just making sure the numbers stay where we think they're going to stay. And if there's spikes, it's easier to close or kind of reconfigure things with smaller amounts of people already coming in. That was kind of my thinking with that.
Thank you.
Without cases right now. So maybe we will be, you know, on June 15th. No, I, I don't think we will be. But maybe we will be by the end of the summer, but we are not without cases now. I, although I think this week we're doing better than last week, we might be either green or gray this week. And I'm happy to adjust the, the weeks if, if, if that's the will of the committee, of course. This was just something I did very quickly. I think Tammy and Carl and I met on Thursday. I put it together Friday and here we are on Monday. So.
I don't, I'm not trying to micromanage. I just really want to understand what the thought process is that you guys arrived at that. I think, you know, we, I'm in a position, I think, where regarding the masks, I think we go with the recommendation. But the rest of it, as far as how you're going to phase back in the operation, that's, that's your, as a department head, that's your bailiwick, right? And I think that's fine. I just was curious as the logic behind it, just for my own edification, in case someone asks me, right? Why, why can't the card guys come in on June 15th, right? I don't know, you know, what, what that's going to be, right? So.
Well, a lot of that too is sharing objects. And I know that they just started letting kids share objects. So bingo, they don't share objects, Scrabble. They share objects. So some of it was just, really for me, it was just being mindful of the numbers and waiting and seeing what the next couple of weeks bring once everything does open up. I think that a lot of senior centers are trying to do that. Even though their, their doors might be open on June 15th or June 1st, they're still doing specific programming to bring people back in slowly.
And how long do you have the tent for?
The tent is until the end of July, which again is a natural kind of, it's a month later than we usually go. And that was because the winter happened and we didn't have classes in the wintertime. So we have that. And then congregate dining was more because we don't drive that Highland Valley does. And we're serving a lot more people right now with grab and go than we did with congregate. So I'm, my proposal, if it's approved, that we do this timeframe to Highland Valley would be to try to do both, to do some congregate and some grab and go so that we're still capturing more people. Because people are eating more, which is good. We want them to have sustainable meals. But I, Highland Valley is going to need time to, to try to figure that out. So I don't want to tell them by June 15th, we would like to do this or July 15th, give them till August 2nd to ponder it. We, we, we might be more likely to get a yes if they have more time to plan.
Other questions from this board?
I, I'm fine with it. I think Cindy, you're going to just adjust on the fly like you've been doing, right? So this is great on paper and if you bump things up earlier, you do. And if you bump things up later, you do. You've got, you've gotten us this far. So I am absolutely not worried about the rest of the game. So.
Well, I, I agree. You're, you're dealing in the senior center with the most vulnerable population when, when we're dealing with this pandemic. So I, I don't have any problem with phasing things in. I think it's a smart move. So, but you know. So God bless you.
Thank you.
What do we got to do now, Carl?
Well, you know, aside from adjusting that first sentence, you would just approve her draft as submitted. And then we would also go with the, the option that gave us for the signs of being just recommended for people who aren't fully vaccinated and those would be put around the Town Hall buildings. So, so those would be those two things. And then we'd be opening our, you know, hallways and doors up next Tuesday for the rest of the people that have been walking in to do transactions throughout the departments, no different than the ones on the north side that have been doing it all along.
So the only thing we have left is meeting participation, right, Doug?
It, right. The, the key thing that Doug started out with is the meetings and how the open law and how all that's going to work. That's still the thing that's going to be under process even past next week. Because it's going to take a while for the legislature to craft. They're not just going to be crafting things out of the open meeting law. They're doing stuff for businesses in terms of how the liquor serving is going to be in, in other types of issues to help out the business communities. Equally important.
And it, and it also does, you know, if you're coming in and you're going, coming to the town clerk's office to pay your bill, that's, we've got that, we've had that process all along, right? That's not a big deal. But if we suddenly have a, you know, there's a planning board hearing using for, or, you know, a hearing in front of us and, you know, 60 people show up, that's going to be tight in the planning board room for a little while, right? So we got to figure, we just got to figure that out. But I, I want to make sure that we remain compliant to the open meeting law too. And like, you know, for now, according to the way I read it, anything, any meeting after June 15th, this board, for example, we all got to be together in the, in the selectmen's conference room. We can, we may not have people there yet. We, we're going to get across that bridge, I guess. So we can still offer the Zoom for remote participation by members of the public. I think we still can do that, but as the, the board itself needs to be present. And I, I'm okay with that, right? We can certainly get there and, and we'll, and we'll step it in. And if they get to the point where they say that you can do remote, I think it just makes it easier, right? You know, running around like crazy to get to a meeting anymore. You can just, you know, zoom in. But that's the benefit, but that's where we're at. So from the three prongs, right? So let's take, let's take them one at a time because I think one, uh, two things we need to vote on. The third, we got a couple of more things to fall into place. So the first is for the senior reopening plan, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the plan as read, except for that mask will be requested, recommended. Thank you.
For those people not fully vaccinated.
You know, and.
That way it's consistent with Tammy's signage.
Would anybody like to make that motion?
Joe Didi will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second the motion.
Very well. Doug Mogulyn, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
Great.
And Doug, if she wants to change that at all halfway through, do we have to come back in front of this board? What do you want to do?
I, I would give her, I mean.
Cindy, should you want to change it, just check, check with the acting chairman.
You've got this, you've got the full, and Tammy, you've got the full faith and credit of this board, right? You, you know, you're doing a spectacular job. You've done a spectacular job.
Yeah, Tammy and Cindy and I will just get together. If we have to find two dates, moving them up or pushing them back, just give us that latitude.
Correct. And, and if there's anything else that you need as far as being able to do it, right? If you think that there's materials or whatever, whatever, just let us know.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. And then, so the second item is we plan to open Town Hall with the lifting of that order. For, for what date, Carl?
Uh, that is next Tuesday, not next, yeah, it's next Tuesday, the first.
So on the first of June, we, we are going to open Town Hall for regular business and masks will be recommended for those. I would say recommended, right? So as we read before.
That's it.
Motion, please.
Joe Didi will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second the motion.
Doug Mogulyn, aye?
Joe Didi, aye.
Russ Fox, aye.
And then, and then what I think we can do with the chairman is by the time we have our next meeting on Monday, June 7th, hopefully we'll have an update regarding the status of legislation on addressing those open meeting law issues. Uh, and, and then that way that'll allow us to, to go back and visit how evening boards will conduct their meetings and whether they'll have in-person or it'll just be Zoom and so forth. So we'll, we'll revisit that aspect on June 7th.
And I think we'll be in a much better, uh, correct. That we'll be in a much better place to know where we're going to be and, and how we can do it, right? And whatever we can do to support it.
Now, you, you, obviously you know, you know, we've taken painstaking efforts to outfit the building with Wi-Fi over the last 13 or 14 months. The second phase of that is just completing. And then, uh, along with appropriations from town meeting last year in week, we have dollars coming from the Channel 15 receipts for the, you know, Channel 15 and Peg's that we can start outfitting some. start outfitting some of the rooms with uh the camera technology, but that's not gonna happen overnight. Uh the selectman conference room, the land use room, the auditorium, those will be the three major ones. And we have to see what those numbers are gonna come in looking like expense wise. And also we'll be dealing with the same issues a lot of other people are. Ordering electronics and trying to get things in a timely fashion. You know, we're gonna be competing against other people because everybody's uh uh has a lot of orders in for technology like laptops, uh anything to do with those chips. So uh that's not gonna be happening right away, but it is in motion uh with the people we're working with at town hall.
And and it'll also be, I I don't think it's gonna be a big deal, but if we do those three with the selectmen's conference room and the land use conference room, some boards and commissions might have to shuffle around in order to make that happen in in rooms that they don't normally meet, right?
Yep, until we can get to those other rooms and we could accommodate that with the, with the room booking schedule.
Right, you know, uh Board of Health is one, right? They used to meet in the land use area, not in the land use conference room. And I don't know if there's a conflicting meeting on Thursday night. Perhaps we can make the select board conference room available for other boards and commissions to utilize other nights, right? So.
Yes, I have mentioned that to Tammy. So we, people are having those discussions.
Fantastic. Okay. This horse has been beaten to death. And you know, again, I want to thank Cindy and Tammy for all of their hard work through this, though we're not done. Closer to the light at the end of the tunnel, and we're still relatively sure it's not a train. So thank you again for all you guys have done.
Welcome. Thank you all for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You have the best yard going.
Thank you. I credit my husband for that, not me. Good night.
Okay, good night. I think those are two milestone events, though, for us, really, right?
Yeah, it it's important. We don't, there's so many different issues, especially with the other stuff that's gonna be coming. We don't want to be making all the decisions all in one evening. We gotta really give it time.
I say June seventh, about ten minutes after the meeting starts, we can have the, they can make all the decisions they want.
I don't know. Doug got us into this mess.
If I recall, I had the shortest chairmanship ever because of the delayed elections. I think this all happened when someone else was chair, right? And I got left with this huge farking mess. And uh and I didn't swear. I I purposely made that different. But yeah, no, it's been a challenging year, right? And with the cooperation of everybody with Carl and the, all the town hall staff and Tammy and Cindy and everybody has kind of made this bearable. And the folks that have been doing stuff in town hall, you know, the town clerk's office being open throughout this and being able to conduct business. You know, a lot of towns, cities and towns didn't do that at all, right? They sent you the portal or something else. You know, we were still able to do a lot of that transactional stuff through the window, the way we always did. Well, as close as the way we always did. Um, you know, before, you know, we would get scared when someone showed up at that window in a mask. Now we get mad if they don't, but um, you know, we're getting to the end of this and you know, we're gonna get town hall back open. We're gonna get meetings going again. And then, you know, maybe we're gonna be able to leverage some technology to get greater participation in government. We'll see. But we're on the right path. So thank you to all. Carl, what's left?
Uh well, we have the um let's see, uh well, we have old business and new business, Mr. Chairman.
Good point. And June seventh?
Hey, everybody.
Thank you, Tammy. June seventh, we'll we'll be reorganizing this board um based on our normal schedule plus one week um due to elections that happened a couple of weeks ago. And why don't we do other new business? Joseph?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Mister Chairman.
Yes.
First thing is, uh we were asked to recruit uh a temporary registrar uh for the election recount, and I'd like to nominate Terry Mish.
Joe Didi will second that. Does Terry know?
I uh heard about this uh uh through uh Mr. Connolly. You know, that uh they, that they were anxious to get a name. I had suggested Terry Mish. They thought it was a great idea. Called Terry. He, because he's retired, it fits into his schedule. Uh the day of the walkthrough and the day of the actual recount. Um and so it's all been verified. And I think you you couldn't ask for a more open and honest individual to do it.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
I believe we do.
Joe Didi will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second that motion.
I just have a question. I have no, I known Terry for twenty years and he's a hell of a guy. There is the third registrar can't make it that day either?
Apparently, there there's a shortage. We have two registrars that will be missing it that day.
Understood.
You know, so there'll be one, uh because we have partisan elections, there'll be one that is a Republican and one is a Democrat.
Say no more. Doug Moglen, I?
Joe Didi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Thank you. I had misread the email and I thought it was one of the three registrars, and I knew of two. And I thought the third, so I didn't want to make sure we weren't stepping on anyone else's toes in that space. But thank you very much for that explanation.
All right. The next thing, Mister Chairman, is I I'd like to, since uh we're not reorganizing to next week, and it's gonna be June, I'd like to see if we couldn't start the reappointment process as quickly as possible. I'd like to recommend that we take care of the police, fire, civil defense, any department heads or uh any uh uh of the ones that were basically, I'll call them rubber stamping at our next meeting. And that we start to promote and vigorously through the press and through uh channel fifteen, uh town uh crier, meet uh signs at the town transfer station, that we're looking for people to get involved in town government. Uh we were very fortunate, uh this last election, we got some new people. And uh I I I I think that this is, after this pandemic, I think maybe there's uh people out there now that uh realize the importance of getting involved with town government, especially uh uh for example, the cell tower. I don't know how many people told me they didn't know about channel fifteen or didn't know about the uh uh code red calls and things like that. So I think we need to push, push and more push to get more people involved uh in town government.
Um Mister Chairman?
One moment, sir. I couldn't agree with Mister Fox more. Um, one of the reasons I was almost late to this meeting, I was meeting with somebody that I'm trying to recruit to get on a border commission, right? So I think we should, wherever possible, the town website, the town crier. You know, um hell, at the dump, that's a great i, transfer station, great idea to to try to get and, you know, talk to anyone you know, and anybody that comes up. And to phrase Mister Didi, anybody who wants to come and bitch at you, give them five minutes and ask them what border commission they want to be on, right? That's what I've been doing. Anyone who wants to complain, more than welcome. And then ask them what border commission they want to help serve on and make a positive change in the town if they're so, you know, emphatic about it. Mister Steinhardt?
I just wanted to speak to uh Mister Fox's issue. Um the uh select board protocols require that we give you such a list of people who are up for reappointment. So Robin and I are working with the Jess in the town clerk's office, and you will have that for your next meeting.
And while you're at that, can you please get an update on that software that they bought a couple of years ago? That's supposed to keep track of when people's appointments expire and should be able to produce that list on demand?
Uh yes.
Thank you. Other new business, Mister Fox?
Yes, sir. Um, this is in regards to uh channel fifteen. And and let me preface my remarks. This is in no way to uh take away with the uh the the job that Mister Clark has has done. Uh but I I think that we kind of got spoiled with Art Boisino filming everything, always there. And I think that during the budget season, we found out how busy Mister Clark is. You know, with other boards and commissions and other other employments. I I guess now I'd like to say, I don't think it's working out. I think it, that we need to revamp this. I think that we need to bring in more people. I had always envisioned that we would be recruiting interns or our volunteers to help out. Um, uh to get more of the uh town events filmed and on channel fifteen to get more activity going. Uh so I would like to suggest that uh at our next meeting that we have some discussion on this and and kick around some ideas on how we can expand this program. And and really get a a lot more bang for our dollar. And I know uh we're very lucky because the vice chairman uh is involved up at Westfield State uh with programming and has his own show. And I think he'd be a wealth of knowledge on how we could probably uh uh expand this and get more people involved.
Fantastic.
Thought I saw a bus coming, but I blinked. I forget just what.
You know, it is a great thing, and I think one of the other, I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
No, you're you're right. It's all good. I, from our radio show, TV show now, it doesn't take much. Unfortunately, if you have the technology and the the, all the pieces, you know, it it really doesn't, at least.
And I, I think with what we've got going on, I mean, I've seen what they've done, what they're able to do, right, with channel fifteen today. You know, with, you know, with Cindy Sullivan, uh she's gone already, but with Cindy and some of the senior programs and stuff that she's been able to run on channel fifteen. And I think as we move into the you know, if we're able to do some of this Zoom room type stuff where we can broadcast to channel fifteen like we did, we successfully broadcast the town meeting live from the, from the high school parking lot on Zoom for the recording, but more importantly, we're able to put it out on channel fifteen for those that couldn't attend. That wanted to at least see what's going on. I I mean, it, there's tons of capability there. And I think there's opportunity with, you know, with Westfield State, with the high school, you know, to to have people partake and, you know, and learn something from that. So yeah, absolutely. Okay. Other new business, Mister Fox?
That's it, Mister Chairman.
Okay, Mister Steinhardt?
Uh yeah, I just wanted to let you know that um uh Randy wanted us to be aware of because of the new Juneteenth holiday. Uh the transfer station um obviously would uh normally end up being closed on June nineteenth, but he's gonna have it open, just very similar to like uh when a holiday falls on a Saturday.
Can we please, so they're gonna close early, correct?
No, they're gonna be open.
Oh, okay, sorry. I, you, you, your audio clipped a little bit.
Nope, it's gonna be open like a normal day. Other divisions that are Monday through Friday will be closed on their Friday, but there'll be people working Saturday on the overtime, just like they do on other holidays. Have days because we, of uh public sanitation purposes. So to know that.
I was gonna say, if we're gonna close on that holiday, we better do a code red for that, because a lot of people aren't gonna know this year that that's a
No, it's not.
Holiday. Great. Thank you, Randy.
Okay, so uh the other items I got is uh Russ Pike from the uh American Legion has invited members of the select board to attend a Memorial Day ceremony, which is gonna be obviously next Monday. So so far Doug has indicated that he's going to be there. And I know, I'm not sure Russell's been under the weather, so just make a note of that for the other two board members.
And is, did I read somewhere that Mister Pike is no longer the commander of the post?
I think they might be going through a uh a change, but that's where it is right now.
Okay.
Yeah, they had their meeting. I was, I I think on Facebook, they did their changing of the guard meeting. I don't know when the date takes effect, but the young lady there will be the new uh commander, who I think you made the barn manager a while back. That she'll be commander now. So I'm sure there'll be a new barn manager.
But that just might be relevant for the other thing that I think I was designated for.
Uh that is true. Maybe we may be interfacing with another uh designee commander. Who has signing authority for them. And then, lastly, under new business, um the posting for the lieutenant's uh positions that the chief had did, those will be uh coming to a close and we'll have the applicant pack is put in your counter drawers. Pick up and we should schedule uh interviews. Now it's uh we're gonna have um interviews with uh people on, in live on the seventh, or do you want them to come in live on the seventh and just zoom them for everyone else?
Well, we, that's still, I don't know yet. But we we will schedule an interview for the seventh. We don't know yet whether it's gonna be in person or it's gonna be in town hall. Because if, we're still under the, the, the governor's order doesn't lift until the fifteenth. We could meet earlier if if everyone's comfortable with that, but I don't know that that we'll have to see how that shakes out.
All right.
But I think the seventh, we should, and I'll I'll confer with the board here because of I'm overextending my term as chair at this point. Is it okay to interview on the, are you guys ready to interview for this on the seventh? If we have packets next week? Or this week, right?
You have the packets now. That we just, we're putting them in your drawers tomorrow.
So we'll have the packets tomorrow. Okay. But are you guys okay with June seventh?
Where are we putting the packets again, Mister Snyder?
In your counter drawers.
Thank you for the clarification.
Just in case you want to know how you spell that word, it's suit of armor.
Oh ouch. I thought we were, we were refraining from that. All right, so, but are you guys okay with June seventh for the interviews for those?
It's two weeks. It's two weeks from today. It's, that's plenty of time.
How much stuff is on the agenda for that night already?
Uh, Robin, I don't think we have a, we're gonna have a a hearing the week after for a liquor. Right?
You know, no, we don't have much.
We don't have much that night, Joe. I mean, ten minutes. These are, you're not, you're not appointing people from out of house. These are in inside people that you know.
So send your three questions to, to Robin.
Yep.
Right? And then, you know, obviously, the applicants will also get a chance to make a statement. You know, like we always do. I don't think there's any need to bust with tradition there, right? So I think send your questions to Robin so she can get them set up for the seventh.
Yep, so those are the things I had under new business.
Did I get everybody for new business? I think I did, right? Uh old business. Oh, I got one for new business. I forgot. I just want to bring it up. I know Carl, you and I have talked about it, but we need to get it done. I want to send a letter out to um the businesses along College Highway, a budding and tangential to Tannery Road regarding possible activity at that intersection for signalization and improvement. Just to keep them in the loop. And if if and when there is a DOT meeting regarding saying that they would be invited to participate. So I guess, where would we get the list of those entities that own property of budding Tannery and College Highway at the intersection?
The assessors office.
So did I just assign that to you? I did.
Just, just the abutters?
Well, I mean, within, not, 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 not in the legal sense, but you know, approaching and exiting, right? Because that, a budding is a legal term, as we all know now, right? It's a very legal term. No, I mean, just in that, that general corridor, right? The people that are gonna really, you know, so the, the tractor supply, the Palmer with the dollar store, Mister Wally to the north. Um, Griffin Land and and so on and so forth. And um Tynick, right, that are gonna be, they could be potentially affected that way. So you know, and as everyone knows, there's a a hearing in front of the plane, but it may be even tomorrow. Um, for a a potentially large um development activity, commercial development activity off College Highway, actually off Tannery Road, away from College Highway. But it will be impactful on that intersection in some manner, in some manner. So we want to make sure that we, as they move through that plant, the town moves through that planning process that we have everybody's, you know, interests represented. So and I've been asked.
I think, so you're looking for all the abutters names. All parcels or just commercial and business ones?
Commercial and business, please.
And not residential?
No.
All right, we'll get that list for you.
Thank you. And old business, um, I think, I don't know if we're going to get this done before the, uh, the chief is not the chief. Green energy policy, that article passed at town meeting? Correct?
Yes.
To adopt the stretch code?
Yep.
So now, next meeting, we can follow up with the, what else do we need the town? And we keep, by the way, whoever's sending the green vehicle policy, stop. We don't need to get it every, every week. I think I have enough to print a phone book on the back of it.
Well, we're, we're, yeah, we're getting a more, uh, I put that, there's a placeholder. And I, I got the other versions today, which was too late to bring forward to you. So I'm going to be, um, uh, hopefully bringing that to you for a future meeting for a first reading.
Just not very green to get the same nine pages every pack. I'll put this one in the top of my file.
Okay.
I got a smile out of Russ. He must be feeling better. All right. Uh, regional dispatch research, we had, uh, just give you the update that we can talk about in open session. Um, still going back and forth. We did have a meeting, uh, amongst the chiefs. And Carol and myself and the attorney that sent to Westfield, Westfield is now going to place and, uh, up our proposal on the city council agenda for their next meeting. It was not submitted in time. Though we thought it was for their meeting that was last week. So whenever their next meeting is, it should be on their agenda. Historical commission vacancy. Well, we'll put that in our push unless we have somebody right now, but we'll put that in our push of recruitment. Um, we just went through the town hall reopen plan discussion with COVID-19 protocol and the, we can scratch the data cap. I don't see us, that's been pushed off into the far future and we've sent our letter and done what we need to do. Other old business, Mr. Fox? Or you want to go first, Carl? Go right ahead.
Uh, we just need to, uh, the last time we adopted your, um, select board schedule for the rest of the summer, where you're going to go on your summer schedule. And we never really did, um, formally adopt the rest of the schedule. You're okay just to get through the month of May. And, you know, that's where we are now. So you have it. Um, and you really should, um, give approval for this document to go through the rest of the summer into the fall so that we can, um, schedule our agenda appointments, which is essentially every other week.
Okay, um.
Yeah, things like that.
I will just, I did look at that prior to the meeting tonight and I had it right in front of me. What did I do with it? Give me one second. There was one date in August that's, and I'll defer to the next chair to set the schedule beyond, uh, here it is. Nope, that's not it. I'll defer to the next chair to adopt it, but there's one weekend, one Monday in August that I will not be there. I think it was the 23rd.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all I know so far. And I am unaware of my, um, any other dates, but that's what I know so far.
Well, I'm sure Mary's going to pick some other dates for you that you won't be at the meetings.
Yeah, who knows? Just letting you know.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I find September's a little wishy washy because of the big, the county fair. So.
Well, we, but we can always fine tune.
That time.
In early August, we have to have some sort of a schedule here where we can be planning meetings. So are you guys okay with voting on that?
Joe Didi will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second the motion.
Doug Moglen, I?
Joe Didi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Other old business, Mr. Steiner?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fox?
Uh, could we add to the list so that it doesn't get lost, that we're trying to do something about, uh, getting a doctor's office in the town of Southwick or medical facility in, in the town of Southwick?
I brought that up with EDC last week as well, too. They were, they were asking about how come they didn't know about the project. Um, off the Griffin land. And I said, there was nothing to do. They came to us. And there's no state money. There's, you know, and so on and so forth. And I said, you know, it's, they, so they said, what can we do? And I said, besides promoting the businesses and, and stuff in our town, there are certain things that would be, you know, certainly advantageous to help us. And one of those is, you know, how do we promote and find a doctor's practice that's willing to come in to take over that facility or open a facility in our town? Right? So that's, that's a great point. We should carry that on old business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
I added it. I added it, Mr. Chairman.
Other old business, Mr. Fox?
No, sir.
Mr. Didi? Okay, I think that's it. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Joe Didi will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
I'll take that as a second. Doug Moglen, I?
Joe Didi, I.
Russ, just raise your hand. Okay, good. All right. Thank you very much, all. Have a great evening.
Good night.